Lord, I'm coming for you this evening, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless this council, bless our mayor, continue, Lord, encourage him and lift his vision. Lord, we bless your holy name this evening. We bless your name, oh God, because you've been so good and you've been so kind. We've had so much sickness and so much death, but God, you're still in charge, and we give you glory this afternoon. We give you praise, oh God. Oh Lord, let us have sweet communication. Give us love, oh God, for one another. Lord, we thank you this evening, oh God. Bless this meeting, oh God. Fill this place with your presence. Cover it with your blood. Lift it with your love, oh God. And Lord, you heal every sick person, oh God. Go into the hospitals, oh God. Do it right now, oh God. And we thank you right now, Lord, for blessing West Memphis. Cover it with your blood, oh God. Lift us, oh God. Encourage each and one, oh God. And Lord, you bless our mind that we follow your direction as we leave this city, Lord. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Let's place the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
I want to call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the row?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Katz.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Willis.
With the quorum being present, we are moved further. Can I get a motion in second to add that bid we talked about first?
So moved.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. I get a motion in second to approve the Christmas decorations bid.
So moved.
As well as the bid. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? What, and also I get a motion in second to approve the City Engineer Public Work Bid for the CNG trash truck.
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, approved. That'll be referred back to the rightful. Can I get a motion to approve the September 29th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? I get, also get another motion in second to approve the October 1st meeting.
So moved.
Second. Hmm?
Was there any correction, any concerns to it? Alright. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes, we had no old business. Councilman, put it.
Make a motion, we don't read O1 and O2 by title only.
Second. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance to authorize Alderman and members of the City Council to purchase services from Charles Suter, DBA, Suter Construction Company, Inc., and for other purposes.
If there's no request to be back on this second reading in two weeks.
Mayor, if I may, I guess, go ahead and make one correction. Anywhere you see Charles Suter, it should be followed by Junior.
Okay.
Yeah, I've marked it in here about four times. It looks like.
Yes, sir.
You make the motion?
Yes, sir.
In a second?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? The correction to be in there. O2?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for repairs of the West Memphis Flood Pond Pumping Station, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I thought suspend the rules in a second. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for repairs of the West Memphis Flood Pond Pumping Station, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a further.
So moved.
Second.
To suspend the rules until the third reading. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for repairs of the West Memphis Flood Pond Pumping Station, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Second. In discussion? Hearing none. All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Also, can I get a motion in second to approve paragraph three?
Section two.
Section two of the University Clause.
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number?
Yes, sir. That ordinance number will be 2560.
2560. West, authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with the global location strategies to develop materials to assist the Office of Economic Development and recruitment of the industrial prospects of the Economic Development Office.
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Also, can I get a motion in second to table the permission for the Mayor to satisfy?
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you as well. I made a report. We start with the Fire Department?
We did not have a quorum.
Didn't have a quorum? Parks?
Parks Department met on October 1st. There were no new financial statements. Plant, physical plant. The director has talked with Senator Keith Ingram about Wi-Fi projects in the city parks, and Senator Ingram requested some information to be submitted to him to see if there was possible funding from the Department of Education to assist with the project, since it would aid with the virtual learning program that the schools are currently engaged with. Work needs to be done at Tilden Rogers Park, on the dock, the pier, wood fencing, pavilions. They work on the fields, concession, and press area. The director is currently trying to hold off, if possible, on these major repairs, because most of this work was scheduled to be renovated in the plans that the bond issue would cover. All the dilapidated fencing has been torn down at three tenants' courts in the city parks. The director is working with Kenneth Johnson to finalize quotes and possible bids for resurfacing these courts and placing outdoor workout equipment in these sites. The West Memphis Dog Park, which will be located on Auburn Street, is 50% completed. Obstacles for the dog to have activities are currently to be considered and will be ordered. Small pavilions and site furniture are the only things that need to be added, and the Parks Department wants to give a special thanks to the West Memphis Fence and Steve Byers for donating all the fencing and installation of the fencing free of charge. The truck that the Parks Department needed has been ordered. The truck will be replaced. A truck that blew an engine and was beyond repair. All water leaks are fixed at Tilden Rogers Park. The Parks Commission would like to thank the Utilities Department, specifically the Water Department, for their assistance with this issue. Improvements that Councilman Murray identified that needed to be made on Horton Park, on Scottwood and MacOllie, will begin to happen in the next two weeks, along with remodeling of all playground impact zones at city parks. The APA regulations require two inches of loose material around all playground equipment as a fall impact zone. A local landscaping company is currently preparing to quote and complete this work. Programming, since reopening the parks for uses on August 15, West Memphis Christian High School is planning their Fall Girl Softball Schedule. The Critney County Boys and Girls Club has begun their final soccer schedule, including practice. Local youth league baseball teams have regularly scheduled practices. Local adult softball teams have regularly scheduled practices. And Marion High School baseball team received authorization to hold regular practice on a field at Tilden Rogers Park. On 10/23 through 10/24, the Premier Softball Association will host a 35-team softball tournament at Tilden Rogers. All social distancing requirements are being, will be enforced, including masks by all visitors and temperature checks upon entry to the softball complex. Arkansas Gaming and Fish Commission is continuing stocking the John Gammon Lake at Tilden Rogers on a regular basis with catfish, and as soon as the temperature changes, they will transition to trout to encourage outdoor activity at the parks. Upcoming event, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the fall fishing-ready rodeo will not be held. However, the Parks Department would like to still encourage fishing at the park with all social distance requirements. Personnel, the department would like to fill and open a general label position to help with parks overload. All summer help is no longer with the department, and since the Critney County Detention Center has restricted the use of trustees because of the pandemic, filling this position is necessary to keep services at an acceptable level. That's the end of the report.
Thank you. Public Works?
Yes, sir. Public Works met on October 6th. Had a very short meeting, but very productive. We had one citizen who had presented a claim. Her name is Ms. Bernice Gill for tire damage. Several of the commissioners went out to look at the spot where she allegedly said her tire was damaged. We found no proof that that could have happened in that area, and of course, we are under tort immunity. So the committee decided to deny her claim of $166 for her tire damage. On our e-waste report, we had 30,140 pounds of recycling, rather, recycling, 30,140 pounds of recycling. We had one e-waste. Our fleet report is as follows as of the date of October 6. Front-end loaders, we had two operational. One was down. The rear-end loader, we had four operational. One was down. Grapple truck, three operational. Three were down. We also discussed all of the things that are going on in the city that are violating all of our codes and ordinances, and we discussed getting with the West Memphis Police Commission. Some of the Public Works Commissioners wanted to get with the West Memphis Police Commissioners to talk about getting police officers to help enforce a lot of the codes, because our one code enforcement officer really just isn't enough, especially on weekends when a lot of the violations are being committed. We've got so many things that are going on in the city that are getting out of hand, and they're going to get more and more out of hand if we really don't put a stop to it or start putting a stop to it. So whenever we have another police commission meeting, let us know so we can join in with you and discuss getting police officers out there helping us enforce the codes, because the code enforcement officer is doing the very best he can, but it's just too overwhelming, so many things that are going on. And basically, that was it. Everything is 4S. The bridges and overlays and all of those are pretty well on track. And as far as the garbage containers, I understand that we do have more that are going to be ordered. All of our citizens have, they're already ordered. All of our citizens did not get garbage containers, but we just wanted to let you know that they are on order. Some people have called me about some, and I'm telling them that they are on order, and we will be getting them. And if you need a handicap voucher or a sign of something of that nature, you can contact the Public Works Department, and they will get you a letter, and your address will be flagged or tagged, however they do it, to let the sanitation workers know that you cannot pull your can out to the curb, and they'll go in your yard and pick it up. And that was just about the gist of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Chairman, come on.
The Chamber met on October 14 via Zoom. We gained three new businesses in September. Unfortunately, I don't have the name of the businesses. I'll make sure that we get those next time. And there was some questions made about a smoother transition of small businesses or businesses coming into West Memphis. And Jim Jackson was on the conference call, and he reported that the city was working on a, I guess, a video that will help people understand if they won't get into business in West Memphis. Here's what you got to do. So that would be a good deal. The Chamber's also been coordinating with the Christmas parade for December 1st, and we'll start planning on the annual banquet soon. Other than that, that was mostly what was discussed, and that's the final, the Chamber report.
Airport?
Airport Commission. There's some good things going on at Airport Commission. The aviation gas tanks were cleaned last week, and it was found that they were all internally still in good shape. Garber Engineers presented a proposal for a plan for hangar number three rehab. It was approved by the Commission after spending a total of, well, it's going to be a total of $400,000 project. That includes a $250,000 state grant, and the remaining $150,000 will come out of the airport funds pending approval from the City Council, but the airport does have the funds, and the Commissioner, I mean, the Director of the Airport will be here at our next meeting to ask. I think she's going to get in contact with Patricia and put it on the agenda. And that concludes the Airport Commission report.
Thank you. AMP?
We don't have one this time. We didn't meet yesterday because it wasn't a third Thursday.
Utility?
Recap of the West Memphis Utility Commission, October 8th, 2020. The West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this date at 8:30 a.m. Safety Director Brett Sims reported that there was 45 days since last recordable injury and 354 days since last lost time injury. There were no new hires or resignations for the month of September. The utility currently has 10 open positions. The fourth item on the agenda was July financial update. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. He showed that the utility has lost $2,654,000, $54 and $89 through July. The fifth item on the agenda was approval of bids for 2020 manhole rehab. This was presented by Engineer Juan AJ. He recommended Upchurch Services Incorporated bid in the amount of $437,315. Motion passed unanimously. The sixth item on the agenda was approval of bids for 1,500 KVA transformer. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. He recommended Arkansas Electric, the low bid in the amount of $22,586. Motion passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda was approval to Lone City, $1 million for flood pond improvements. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. Motion passed unanimously. The last item on the agenda was approval to issue bonds. This was presented by Michael McBride with Stephens. Motion passed to issue bonds for sewer improvements and automated metering infrastructure, up to $30 million in construction funds. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Alright, those are the committees that have met. I got a few appointments. I'm just giving you all some notifications. I'm in the process of now starting to search for a new Fire Chief for the city of West Memphis. So you probably heard about that in the next couple, well, in the next week. It's not going to be a couple of weeks. Looking for a new Fire Chief. Number two, we, Ms. Tori walking here Monday. She'll walk in at the city as the Finance Director for the city of West Memphis.
I remember her first day of kindergarten. I just, it's huge, so it's great.
We're going definitely back to her position. Todd and I have had some conversation of some potential things, individuals that we got that, do we want to call it more of a, Todd, what would you call it? Well, I'll take care of it. It is personnel issue in a way, but we think we got a plan. So we'll be taking care of that. Due to the budget, we started to prepare the budget pretty soon. I looked, we looked high. Some people we seen, we didn't find the money, we didn't have the money to pay them, but who would know? What person could I have found that came in and did what Frank did? Nobody. When you pay them $130,000, you can even knew Frank, because Frank just knew a whole lot about everything. So right now, on the road with who I got, I'm confident. I feel confident that she can do the job, so congratulations, Ms. Tori. Also, last, I'm going to ask, for you all to keep, Ms. Robbie, in your prayers. She lost her sister, and you know, I've talked to her a couple of times, and she's really taking it hard, really dealing with that kind of hard. So I ask you all to keep her in your prayers. If you see her, give her a call, go by anything, but just keeping your prayers. I got, that's all the appointments I have.
I want to ask one question.
Who?
Kenneth? Go ahead.
Ken, my prayer still with you. We're going to continue praying for you, yeah.
I just had one thing. Thank you so much, Tori, for getting the job description for our city treasurer. So where are we on that? We're just going to look at this, the responsibilities and bring it up next two weeks as far as the city treasurer.
The thing is, just get the job description. I haven't got it yet. I haven't seen it. I ain't even know.
She gave it to us, and thank you so much.
Mayor, I prepared an amended ordinance for the city treasurer position, which incorporates the job description, some of the things that were not in the original ordinance that we had. And what I tried to do is, and I didn't have it ready by Friday at noon, but, and I just gave it to Tori, and she's going to make copies of it. But what I tried to do was make it in more plain language, since it was a 1952 ordinance, and there was a lot of said this and legalese type stuff. I tried to take some of that out, and then I just tried, she had only a couple of things duplicated that I didn't add in there, but everything else should be in that ordinance and also the previous duties that were in there.
Sounds good. Great. Thank you.
I also sent both individuals in the 2020 budget so they can start looking at, get something with it. Make sure it's something they do want to undertake. Hopefully, we'll be back in them within a few days and put it on with the staff and make that all possible.
Is there some kind of way you could get them to, I mean, I would like to talk with both of them as well, and other city councils may want to kind of interview them. I don't know how you feel about it, but that's how I feel about it.
That's fine. And also, it's a more, if they want to apply, so they get their resumes. And so one thing I am going to ask this council to do, whomever you all choose, choose someone that has some type of accounting experience. Now, who we like, well, who has some accounting experience to deal with numbers. Counting for you.
Oh, what I want to do is try to give someone some money. That's what I'm interested in. I want to add, I didn't know until today I found out that I had $2130, you know, $2,130.76 still left, and I want to add it on today so I can give it away and be through with it.
Make the motion?
Okay. What I want to do?
Well, no, go on. Go ahead.
What I want to do is, I want to give, like, Belto AME $500 to their, you know, for their children fund. And Hope 3, I had a check for them. For some reason, I wasn't able, I got it late, but I wasn't able to contact them.
Hope House.
Okay. And I really want to give them $500, but they're going to have to come get it, because I've been down there numerous times, wasn't able to contact anyone. And the Girl Scout Council, I gave Tori the information. I want to give them $500.
Okay.
And then the balance of that, you know, distributed between the Boys and Girls Club.
How about one city, L.R. Jacks?
May I add to that motion?
Yes, whole woman. What's, you had 21?
Yeah, 21, I mean, $2,130.76.
So it's like 360. We'll get the exact total for the board. Ms. Mohammed?
Right. I've given, talked to Ms. Tori, our new city treasurer, no, Finance Director. Our new Finance Director, and congratulations. I've known you since elementary school. Still remember you walking up and down the halls of Wonder Elementary, so you most certainly are beautifully blessed. And I told Mrs. Breckin about it, too. She's so excited. I talked with some of the people with the Streetsense organization, and I did get their 501(c)(3), and I've given it to Ms. Tori. I have $1,600 remaining, and I'd like to donate all of that to that particular organization.
It's three cents.
Uh huh. Streetsense.
Well, yeah, man, we just on the last week.
Yes, it was. I didn't know they were certified.
Even though we're going to vote to approve these items, we're just going to ask you the agenda. Do we need to do that?
I think so. Needs to be added to the agenda before it can be voted on, yes.
That's what he did. I'm sorry.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Alderman. I thought that's what James did.
On your motion now?
That's what I had said earlier, but I didn't get a second to add that to it.
That's what I thought you did, but I guess not.
Your motion is to accept your donations.
Right. We didn't say add it to the agenda, yes.
Yeah.
And another trace that I added it now.
We got it straight. Thank you.
Any other donations that want to be given out? All the favor by? Opposed? Well, all those donations that go to the proper organizations. I have one presentation that I got to give out. It's already pretty much been given, but I got to do it officially. I thought it wasn't given officially. The Arkansas Municipal League, Jack R. Rose Senior Distinguished Service Award, and Honorable Mayor Jack Rose of Lake Village, who served as mayor for 33 years and as lead president from 1980 to 81, is hereby bestowed upon the Honorable James Fuller, Councilmember of West Memphis, for 25 years of dedicated service for the city of West Memphis. Congratulations to him, regardless of municipal league, virtual.
Congratulations.
What want to say? I was shocked, but I'm glad to receive it and again.
You learned it, James.
I learned it?
Yes, you learned it.
I'll take that. Like I say, I really appreciate, you know, being on the City Council and everything. All my life, I really liked dedicating myself to this community. I love this community. I grew up in this community, and like I say, I've been around for a while on the City Council, and I really love what I do, and that's why I'm here, because I like, I love what I do, not like, I love what I do. And I want to thank you all for the support that I've gotten over here. Thank you.
I didn't have anything else. Anyone else have anything in there? Jim Jackson?
Just want to remind people, there's a job in, a pop-up job in Moody this weekend, Friday and Saturday, at the Center of Park Lot. We saw Jeff, Jeff the Girl, the Louvre, and directed and acted in on folks from Memphis, senior photographer, I think, that had it on social media. Really well done, Moody. Should be a good time. I've got women's cars, fifty cars in the park lot. So Friday and Saturday night, there'll be tickets are available at the Academy and in advance. So if you're out and about, you want to go to the job in Moody, you can have it. You can get the audio, through your phone, video. Pretty pleased. We'll have concessions over there. Friday and Saturday night, there's a private movie.
Jim? How much are the tickets and where can you pick them up?
I'm thinking I remember they were $10 or $15 in advance. $15 at the Academy. And to be honest, I don't know exactly where you can buy the tickets.
Counselor, for you, did you have some?
Oh, two things. Number one, I kind of want to mention about the election that's coming up October. The early votes start October 19th and go through November 2nd. And one of the things that poses a problem for a lot of people, actually, it says in the, in the statement that they put inside of your absentee ballot when it comes, you must put your ID in there in order for your ballot to be counted. And I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, because, you know, I've been getting calls every day, but like I tell, it said it needs to be in there. So you need to put your ID, you know, in there some form, not your ID itself, but a copy of your ID.
Copy your ID.
So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that it needs to be in there, because some people saying, well, you know, I voted absentee before, and it shouldn't go in. I don't, they think they don't have to put it in there, but they do, because it says it on the paper that they get. And one other thing that I wanted to say, now two, and besides. And, and besides that, uh, you know, of course, you know, you and I, we had talked about, you know, our flag posts around the city. And I just wanted to make sure because before they put them up, of course, you know, there is no flag that's supposed to tower over the United States flag. And so we, we, we try to, I know we started off like that, but we were hoping that we get all that corrected, you know, so, so, uh, and matter of fact, I kind of mentioned to one of the young men down on the other end, on the east end of Broadway, but I see the others two is going up. The other one is going up, they haven't, they haven't done the one at the library, but we need to kind of screen that out a little bit if, if we can. You know, and, but that's it, that, I'm going to save the other one for next time.
Ms. Monday? Ms. Hope, Ms. Hutchinson?
Sir?
Do you have anything?
Oh, no, no, sir, thank you.
Ms. Harris? Mary, Ms. Crowe? Alright, well, um, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All favor by? Oh, 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 oh. Do everyone have their, their laptop?
Is this one mine?
Is it? Okay. You want to make sure everybody got everything?
There one thing I was going to recommend, that we need a sleeve, you know, I'm just saying, it's kind of flapping in where it won't break, you know, driving.
Hey, hey, you ain't had no water all day. Well, can I get a motion in second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
When do we start using it?